Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Rorba.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Chalamchela.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
And Kozlowski is absent.
If you'd all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that brings us to business from the floor. This is the public's opportunity to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. And while we are happy you're here and interested in what you have to say, please understand that state law prohibits us from deliberating or taking action on items that are not on the agenda. Clerk will call your name. We give each of you three minutes to speak, and if you could be respectful of that, we would appreciate it. Madam Clerk, do we have some folks who'd like to speak to business from the floor?
Yes, you have five requests to speak this evening under business from the floor. Your first two speakers will be Sharon Kindle, who will then be followed by Caesar Placentia. So Sharon, come on up.
First of all, I would like to show you a picture, and this is Ernie Sheldon, who was the father of Folsom Parks. And since it's July, it's the month of Park, Folsom Parks.
Sharon, if you could speak right into that microphone so they can pick it up on the recording, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
So, Ernie Sheldon has been a dedicated advocate for the development and maintenance of Folsom Parks, playing a pivotal role in shaping the city's green spaces and recreational areas. His visionary leadership and unwavering commitment have significantly enhanced the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. And I just think that each July, we should honor Ernie. When he first came here, there was only three to four parks, and now we are approaching 50 parks. So, I have a quote that, by Albert Einstein, "Look deep into nature, and you will understand everything better." And then we have a quote from Alex Trebek, "If you can't be in awe of nature, there is something wrong with you." So, I just want to be so thankful for Ernie's leadership, and he had a group of people, was part of Ernie's Army, and I'm proud to be one of those people. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, our next speaker will be Caesar Placentia, who will then be followed by Margie Donovan.
Welcome, Caesar.
Hello, thank you. Hello, my, I'm Caesar Placentia. I'm a carpenter. Good evening, Chair and Council. Today I stand before you to shed light on three critical pillars of societal well-being: livable wages, healthcare accessibility, apprenticeships, and construction. Firstly, the concept of livable wage is not just about earning enough to survive but to thrive with dignity. It ensures that individuals can afford the basics: food, shelter, and healthcare. Secondly, healthcare should not be a luxury, but a fundamental human right. Accessible healthcare ensures that no one has to choose between financial ruin and their well-being. Lastly, apprenticeships and construction offer a pathway to sustainable careers and economic stability. By investing in vocational training, we not only address the skilled labor shortage, but also provide opportunities for personal growth and development. In conclusion, let us strive for a society where everyone has access to livable wages, healthcare, and opportunities for advancement. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Okay, our next speaker would be Margie Donovan. She's calling in. So, Margie, when you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor Aquino and honorable City Council members and city staff. My comment tonight, once again, has to do with access to City Council materials. Many of you know, I have been advocating for our website to meet WCAG standards, and while the requirement isn't absolute yet, the requirement under Title II of the ADA to make all city programs and materials accessible does exist under ADA Title II. I received an email notice and a modified document. The website is not fully accessible, and I immediately respond and say, "I will be there. Please send me the council packet." Today, I received the council packet. I don't know about you guys, but I don't have that much time in a given day to read the full packet. When I sat down this afternoon, when I got home to read the packet, unfortunately, despite the numerous times I have communicated with city management, that image PDF, scanned PDF is an image file and is not accessible. Once again today, I received a scanned image PDF file of the full council packet and was unable to read it. I cannot urge the city to take the issue of ADA Title II more seriously and make all programs and services fully accessible to all members of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Margie.
Thank you. Your next speaker will be Lea Hasood, followed by Dennis Rogers.
Tessa, come on up.
Apologize if I mispronounced that.
So, I was under the impression that we were here to speak about Ernie Sheldon today, and I just wanted to say just a few words. I'll keep it short. But, you know, I was born in 2000. I was born in Folsom. And, you know, I remember when I was born, it was just my house, a couple houses on the street, and the rest of it was just like fields and grass and trees, right? And it seems like, as I grew up, the city grew up with me. You know, we saw Intel, we saw Palladio, we saw, you know, all the developments south of 50. And the person, one key person who was instrumental in all of that change was Ernie Sheldon, right? And I'm just so grateful to have, you know, known him, worked with him, and really see what it truly means to be a public servant. And I'm, I'm just so grateful for the opportunity to be able to speak on him, and yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Tessa.
Okay, our next speaker will be Dennis Rogers, who will be followed by Justin Rathel.
Good evening. Hi, Vice Mayor.
Hi, nice to see you.
My name's Dennis Rogers. I live on Pennock Court, and I'm here tonight because you guys were doing a paving project in our neighborhood, right? And those aren't a lot of fun. But I'm here tonight because Mark Rackevan and Ryan Chance were very responsive. We had some issues that were going on there. Unfortunately, Saturday morning at 7:00 a.m., the contractor had a jackhammer on our street, right? I emailed Ryan, and he got back to me, I think, at like 7:30 in the morning. So, I'm here because not a lot of times, people come in and say, "Hey, you have responsive staff." I didn't agree with everything that was going on. We went back and forth. They were incredibly responsive. They were incredibly professional, and they showed out well for you guys. And I just wanted to say thank you to them and make sure that all of you, especially Ms. Anderson, heard that, because she is their boss. So that, that, in a very difficult situation, they managed it well, and the impacts are difficult, and asphalt stinks, you know, and you can't open your windows, when your wife is calling you saying, "Hey, I'm trapped in the middle of the cul-de-sac because there's these giant trucks in the middle," and I'm like, "Well, what am I supposed to do about it?" But your staff was very responsive, and I just wanted to make sure I said that. And I just also, with just a couple seconds, just wanted to also thank Ernie, because, you know, both my daughters were born here. They were born at Folsom Mercy. You know, they grew up and played sports throughout all the parks. My wife and I love the, the infrastructure that's here, and so it is wonderful when you have folks like Ernie, among others, who've contributed to the quality of this year. So, but the main point today was to come in and extol the virtues of Ryan and Mark, because they were very kind to respond to a single individual who was a little cranky because his wife was cranky. Got some emails when I heard jackhammers at 7:00 a.m., and I just wanted to make sure that they got their due for the hard work that they do.
Thank you. Thanks for coming on. We appreciate all feedback, but especially positive feedbacks.
Thank you. All right, your final speaker under business from the floor will be Justin Rathel.
Good evening.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council members. I wanted to report back quickly. I was here a couple weeks ago asking for an acceleration of the cleanup around the Park Shore community. I went and walked that area earlier today, and I'm here to say thank you for getting that area cleaned up. Many of the residents were, when I walked that area, they were upset and irritated and ready to reclaim the natural spaces around their area, and they were worried about fire danger and sanitation issues. So, I just want to say thank you to our chief, our code enforcement, and also the staff for coordinating with Fish and Game in making sure not only the encampments on city property were cleaned up, but also the ones on federal property. I'm also here tonight, got some handouts for you. I'm here to urge you to pass a resolution in support of Proposition 36, which is looking to make some changes to Proposition 47. It's the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act. I brought you some sample resolution language tonight. I know you can't take action on business from the floor. I also brought you a small flyer from the Californians for Safer Communities, which outlines what's in that proposition. We have a retail theft problem in Folsom, as been mentioned by our chief many times here in these chambers, and one of the unattending consequences of Prop 47 was to allow criminals to steal up to $950. If they stole less than $950 per theft, they really weren't prosecuted. So, Prop 36 will allow our officers and the district attorney to aggregate those thefts up to over $950 and make it a felony again. Prop 36 also adds fentanyl to the list of hard drugs. Unfortunately, fentanyl is now responsible for 20% of youth deaths in the state of California, which is unacceptable. It does need to be on the hard drug list. I'm proud of the work our police department has done with chasing down traffickers and dealers of fentanyl in our community, but this proposition will allow them to intervene earlier, hopefully before incidents like that happen in our community again. Finally, Prop 36 will enact a new class of crime called the Treatment Mandated Felony, which gives offenders with multiple hard drug convictions the opportunity to go in for treatment instead of being incarcerated, which I think is a great option. California League of Cities has recently voiced their support. The mayors of San Francisco, San Jose, Fresno, and Santa Monica have also voiced their support. If you go to the website, there's 2,000 businesses, different communities. I think there's only about six or seven cities that have passed resolutions in support so far, but we'd love to see Folsom on the list. It's time for Folsom to advocate for what's best for our community, so I hope that you guys will pass a resolution of support for Prop 36 as soon as you can. Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you for the suggestive language. We actually already had this on our radar, and we're planning to bring it back, a second meeting in August, so thank you. Okay, that takes us to agenda update. Madam City Attorney, any agenda update to report?
No update, thank you.
Just a couple, maybe, documents on the back table?
My apologies. An update to Item 6. I believe there is some information for the council, and Item 8, as well, has some citizen communication.
Thank you very much. Okay. That brings us to our consent calendar. Do we have any requests to speak on any consent items?
You have no request from the public to speak on consent calendar items.
Any council member who wants to poll a consent item?
No, I just want to make a comment.
Okay.
Not polling. Item number two, I just want to sincerely thank Mark Chloee and Paul Ramiro, no names, for giving their voluntary team again to serve on Alandale. We always look for volunteers. There are plenty of openings out there. Thank you again sincerely.
I'll go ahead and move Items 1 through 4 on the consent.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Council members Rorba.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Okay, next, we're going to go to our five public hearings. We'll do all of these the same way. First, we'll have a staff presentation, then questions from staff, then we'll open up the public hearing, take public comment, close the public hearing, and bring it back to the council for a motion and a second. So, first item, please.
First item is Item Number 5. This is ordinance number 1347. This is an ordinance adopting unit prima facie speed limits on Folsom Lake Crossing, White Rock Road, and Savannah Parkway. This will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. Zach Bosch was supposed to give this presentation this evening. He had a family situation to take care of, so I'm coming off the bench for him. The item before you, as the city clerk mentioned, is we have three new speed limits that we're recommending that you adopt. Just a brief refresher, that speed limits are set through a process known as the Engineering and Traffic Survey. This is, this is absolutely required if Folsom Police Department is going to be able to use radar to enforce said speed limit. Why do we need these? We have to establish what the prevailing speed is on the roadway in question, again, to enable the use of radar speed enforcement. Having a properly posted speed limit does encourage uniform driving behavior. It establishes the baseline for what most of the motorists choose to feel is the reasonable prudent speed to drive on the given roadway. Those that drive too fast can be subject to enforcement. It does take into consideration actual speed data of survey of cars that are traveling at free-flow speed under no constrained conditions. It takes into account the collision history and the roadway factors present at the time of the survey. And again, not only is this required by the California Vehicle Code, but there are state and federal guidelines and policies that we have to adhere to, and of course, the Folsom Municipal Code, which delegates the responsibility of adopting the final speed limit to you, the City Council. So, the three surveys in question are the section of Folsom Lake Crossing, where we recently completed the median barrier. It's important to understand that this survey only covers the section of the roadway from the East Natomah Street traffic signal to the top of the hill where the spillway traffic signal is. That was the extent of our Phase 1 median barrier project. So, since we made a very substantial change to the character of that road, we took the opportunity to resurvey it, and it's a good thing we did. We're very pleased with the outcome here, an enforceable 45 mile an hour speed limit on that stretcher road. Again, this does not affect the portion of the roadway from the top of the hill at the spillway all the way down to Folsom Auburn Road. That section was not changed yet. When we come back with our Phase 2 median barrier project, then that will afford us an opportunity to resurvey that section. Savannah Parkway is a recently constructed collector street in the Folsom Plan area, so a roadway never existed before, never had a pre-existing survey. The initial survey came in at 35 miles per hour, which is an appropriate speed limit for that type of road and consistent with similar such roadways elsewhere in the city of Folsom. And then White Rock Road, this is actually the portion of the Capital Southeast Connector that was constructed from Prairie City to East Bidwell. The original White Rock Road, the rural two-lane roadway with the 55 mile an hour speed limit, was completely re-engineered as a high-speed, limited-access expressway built to essentially freeway standards. So, this is a brand-new survey for that newly engineered road. We came in at a enforceable 60 mile per hour speed limit. So, again, that's, those are the only three surveys we have for you this evening, and we do request and recommend that you adopt all three speed limits. Take any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Just to clarify, from Folsom Auburn to the top where the spillway is, it is 55 miles an hour, and then as you make the turn to Natomah, it is 45?
So, yeah, from Folsom Auburn to the, you know, past the gun range, and then to the top of the hill, it, I think it is posted 55. That is not backed up by a radar speed survey.
Okay.
But when you get to the top of the hill where the spillway traffic signal is, and all the way down under the Johnny Cash overcrossing down to the East Natomah Signal, that will all have an enforceable 45 mile an hour speed limit.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rorba, any questions? Councilmember Chalamchela?
Yes, I do. Especially, I want to give kudos to bringing that 45. Otherwise, it was 55. Mark, I know you and I briefly talked, and I think this has been my concern. If you can scroll back either second slide or third slide, where, yes, why do we need to do ETS?
So, the...
No, they're all good. I'm not saying anything at all. So, they're all good. The one thing, when the policies are being written, it's a very scientific way of written. My concern is, the human behavioral element is the one I have a big concern. If you can go to the next one now...
This one?
Yes. Eighty-fifth percentile. So, that's my problem right now. If 85 cars out of 100, I can say it that way, right, eighty-fifth percentile, almost, close to, are going in that speed, which is right now, I think, 66 miles per hour.
For the White Rock Road.
White Rock Road, right? When we all use our psychology, our mindset, when you look at the speed limit board, that gives you a trigger to your sixth sense. Okay, freeway 50, highway 50 is 65. People snooze to close to 70 to 75. And the people, again, laws are there, enforceables, I get it. I'm not denying on that fact, but we do enforce, not every day. I want to be honest as well. Chief Hillman is not here, but probably he may be listening. He has much, much other high priorities. Vice Mayor, my, my request is, if you can go to the next one, Mark, 60, the minute people see 60, I draw twice, in fact, even today also. As rightfully said, it's a 55 posted because of the old ones. I draw, there is 55 miles per hour post-speed between East Bidwell and Prairie City, and I draw all the way from Prairie City to the Douglas. It's 55, already posted. So, now we are telling the drivers who are driving, "Now you can go 60." That's a posted speed. My concern there is, they'll go either 65, they'll hit 70. Those are very local roads still, and there is a scot road is going to cut through from the freeways, and the senior homes are very next to it. They're all going to merge into the, that place. That's fast. I rather, you know, want to keep it as a 55, whatever it is right now. Yes, it is not enforceable. I get it. I'm agreeing on that one, but are we enforcing every day?
No, I'm going to go with we are.
Right? I'm sorry, right? So, my consensus is, we have other priorities. Even though we are going to enforce, I was talking to my wife and my few friends before I come to this meeting, "Do you know there is an enforceable speed?" All of them said, "No, we don't know." If the cop is there, holding the gun, I'm going to slow down. So, my request is, keep that as a 55. Higher speed is not going to do for anybody any good. That's my request to my colleagues here. You have a scientific evidence, Mark. I'm not denying on that fact. I'm using the common sense and people behavior into it.
So, I have a follow-up question, then. If, if you recommended, if we said 55, is that enforceable? Because it seems like the pace range there, 55 to 65, that might support it.
It does not.
It has to be. So...
It would either have to be 65 or 60 miles per hour to be enforceable with radar.
And why is that? Because of how, I'm not questioning you, I'm just curious, like, how, how does that?
Very fundamentally, the way engineering and traffic surveys are conducted is you have to determine what is the 85th percentile, as Councilmember Chalamchela mentioned. That's the speed that's not exceeded by 85% of the surveyed vehicles. Once you determine what that speed is, you round off to the nearest 5 mile per hour increment.
That's what I missed.
And then you get one additional 5 mile per hour downward zoning for engineering factors. So, in this case, 85th percentile is 66, rounds to 65, and you get one downward zoning, which gets you to 60. So, 60 is the absolute minimum enforceable speed limit with radar.
Okay, thank you for explaining that again.
Any other questions for Mark? Okay, then we will open the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public who wish to address the council?
You have no request to speak on this item.
Anyone in the audience who maybe didn't fill out a blue card who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. If there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move ordinance number 1, 1, sorry, 1347.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Rorba.
Yes.
Chalamchela.
No, for, I know, I can't split that one, but my vote is no.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Next item, please.
Okay, your next item, Item Number 6. This is Resolution Number 11232. This is a resolution approving and confirming the report of delinquent utility charges and requesting Sacramento County to collect such charges on the tax roll. As a reminder, this was the item that had amendments to it.
Good evening.
Good evening. Folder got closed.
Okay.
I'm getting there, I think. No, presentation. That one.
Okay, good evening. Vice Mayor, council members, I'm Liz with Hannah, the Revenue Services Supervisor, and I will be going over Items 6 through 8. All right, so Item 6 is Resolution Number 11232. It's a resolution to the City Council of the City of Folsom approving and confirming the report of the delinquent utility charges and requesting Sacramento County to collect such charges on the tax roll. So, the city provides various utility services to approximately 27,000 properties throughout the city, including water, sewer, and solid waste services, and the revenue division bills and collects approximately $54 million annually in municipal utility charges. So, per California Code and Folsom Municipal Code, we can transfer delinquent utility charges to the county tax roll. While the vast majority of our accounts throughout the city are current, there are some that are more than 60 days delinquent with delinquent balances of $150 or greater. These accounts are appropriate for transfer to the county tax roll for collection. So, the report you are approving tonight lists 186 active accounts for a total of $248,884. These are all more than 60 days delinquent. Each owner receives a monthly bill, and if delinquent, monthly delinquent notices and intent to lien was mailed to property owners on June 20th, which included a deadline to dispute any charges. Additionally, the public hearing notice was published on July 5th and July 12th, and I will note that our deadline to send the transfer filed to the county is August 2nd. So, with this item, I'm recommending that you adopt Resolution 11232, requesting the county auditor to transfer these delinquent amounts to the property tax roll for collection.
Thank you. Any questions for Liz? Okay, then we will open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
You have no request to speak on this item.
Anyone in the audience want to come forward to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move...
Madam Vice Mayor, if I could just interrupt for one second?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify a couple things for the record. First of all, if Councilmember Rodriguez could mention that the council will be approving the updated report that was submitted this afternoon rather than the original one, there are some differences there, and we want to make sure the county collects the accurate amount. And just for the record, this will require a two-thirds vote.
Thank you.
Two-thirds vote, yeah, okay. So, Vice Mayor, I just want to make a comment. I was talking to Liz also. She understands my problem. But, good job, from Friday 2:30 to now, 186.
Yeah.
Yeah, you collected in the last two days. Awesome. My only request is, now, these are the homeowners. That's what Liz, you're saying.
Correct. Some are commercial property owners, correct?
Yes. So, but they are the legal property owners, yeah.
Yeah, the legal property owners. My intuition says, most of them are renters, and homeowners may or 90% may not know. And I was taking myself as an example. I stopped receiving physical hard copy bills. I stopped receiving physical hard copy bills. I am more electronic. And I was requesting our city, uh, if I'm a homeowner, renter, I may have a business license and everything, all those are good, but he is only receiving the electronic, and we are sending the yellow or pink delinquent notices as a hard copies. But he's only receiving soft copy bills, and he is making payments or not making. So my request is, we got to open up in a multiple channels of communications to at least these, uh, challenging one-hundred-and-eighty-plus customers. That's my request. Uh, we can definitely put this on the lean right now, but we have to adopt besides the physical mails, find, uh, electronic emails, those ones. I know you mentioned our billing system is not allowing right now. I got it. But we still have to put this request. Uh, if the billing system is not allowing, whether, you know, one of our administrative assistants can help, however, I don't know. That way, we can have a full proof that we tried every aspect, every possible way.
And we can look into that.
That's my comment and request, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I will move forward with resolution number one-one-two-three-two, approving the updated report.
I'll second on that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Roerba?
Yes.
Chalam Charla?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. Next item.
Next item is item number seven. This is resolution number one-one-two-three-three. This is a resolution amending prior resolution number one-one-one-seventy-two and approving the updated city impact and connection fee schedule for law enforcement, fire suppression, general facilities, vehicles and equipment, park improvement, Humbug Willow Creek, housing trust, water, sanitary, sewer, solid waste, transportation improvement, drainage, and light rail impact fees.
Thank you, Krista, so I won't let you say that. Um, so in May two thousand and six, City Council adopted resolution seven-eight-one-two, which established a new city impact and connection fees and adopted an annual inflationary adjustment. Uh, the inflationary adjustment is from the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index for January through December twenty-twenty-three. The twenty-twenty-three CCI is two-point-seven-zero percent. Um, and so within that report, we have the updated fees applying the annual inflationary adjustment, and we do recommend that you adopt resolution one-one-two-three-two or one-one-two-three-three.
So Liz, for this item and also for the next one, because the staff report references that two thousand and six action, I think it's maybe a little bit confusing to the public, does that mean we haven't done a comprehensive rate study since two thousand and six? Or fee study?
Different departments have done studies overall comprehensively. I would say, no, we haven't done the whole city all at once. For this one, for impact fees, they have been done when new impact fees have come on or if there's needed to be an increase or a change to a fee if you wanted to add a facility. So for this one, there's definitely been studies as any new fee has come on. Pam might be able to add to that.
Yeah, and then Community Development this year did the Nexus study, and you recall, we came to you for the next item as it relates to planning fees. We moved forward with building and engineering fees that the City Council adopted, and then we'll plan to bring the, the bigger planning fee update item back to City Council in the first quarter of next year, and that schedule we laid out for you in June. Um, and so this would just be the annual inflationary adjustment on the next item for, um, you know, for the planning fees, and then we'll address the bigger potential increases based on that Nexus study, uh, in twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions for Liz before we go to public comment? Okay, then we will open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
You have no request to speak on this item.
I assume nobody in the audience wants to speak to this one either, so we will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion. I will move into resolution number one-one-two-three-three.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, please call the roll.
Councilmember Roerba?
Yes.
Chalam Charla?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. Next item, Liz.
Okay, next item is item number eight, resolution number one-one-two-three-five, a resolution amending prior resolution number one-one-two-one-nine and enacting the annual inflationary adjustment for city user fees for planning.
Okay. So again, in May two thousand and six, Folsom City Council adopted resolution seven-eight-one-five, which established a new user fee schedule for selected city services and adopted an annual inflationary adjustment. Uh, the annual inflationary adjustment is from the U.S. Bureau of Statistics and California Department of Finance, CPI, West Urban Consumers, San Francisco, CMSA, um, and the annual amount as of December of the previous calendar year. So the twenty-twenty-three CPI is two-point-six-two percent, um, and these fees would be effective September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four. So as Pam mentioned, this is the planning fees that were pulled out of the last one, so just keeping the current ones and increasing by the inflationary adjustment. Um, so staff recommends that council adopt resolution one-one-two-three-five.
Okay, any questions for Liz on this item?
I do, I have a question based, I mean, I didn't think of this myself, based on the emails we got, um, um, so I'm sure you've read the couple email, okay. Thank you. Um, so which provides the, so I'll just start in the, in the middle. Requires a review and update fees every three years, but that requirement is not mentioned or addressed in this report. Can you address that?
I could help with that one.
Thank you.
For this particular one, the planning fees, we are addressing it right now.
And with, okay, what you just discussed, okay. Okay, that was mine.
Any other questions for Liz or staff? Then we will open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
You have no request to speak on this item.
And I see no one in the audience running down. So we will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move resolution number one-one-two-three-five.
Okay, perfect, we've got a motion in a second, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Roerba?
Yes.
Chalam Charla?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes, last one.
Okay, your last public hearing this item, this evening is item number nine. This is resolution number one-one-two-three-six. This is a resolution approving the final engineer's report for all the landscaping and lighting districts mentioned on their agenda.
Please don't read them all.
I'm not going to read them all.
Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jamison Larson, Municipal Landscape Services Manager. I'm presenting the resolution approving the final engineer's report for twenty-four-twenty-five. Uh, in summary, this report includes all thirty lighting and landscaping districts in one report. Uh, there have been no changes to the engineer's report from the preliminary approved on June eleventh. Uh, we are, we do have four districts that are not being assessed the maximum authorized rate. Uh, these districts have adequate fund balance to achieve a balanced budget without the need to assess the full amount. Uh, there are a number of districts that are inadequately funded currently, and, uh, in order to continue absorbing the rising cost of service, these districts currently being monitored for future outreach regarding a new assessment overlay include Briggs Ranch, Hanford Cross, Cobble Ridge Two, Reflections Two, and Broadstone Number Four. Uh, we are continuing outreach in Etoma Station for this fiscal year, and then we have some major projects, uh, included in the various districts uh, contained in this report, including completion of ladder fuel removal and all L and L open space areas for fire hazard reduction, and then a continued focus on water-wise landscaping, including multiple areas of landscape retrofit to change from turf to drought-tolerant shrubs. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for Jamison?
Only one thing, I know, I'm trying to look for those boards. This has gone through L and L committee?
Yes, the preliminary budgets went to each of the members.
Each of the members, they discussed, and they are aware. I'm sure they are passing down to the whomsoever, the residents, they want. Okay, good, thanks.
Okay, then we will open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
Once again, you have no request to speak on this item.
Okay, then we will close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move resolution number one-one-two-three-six.
I'll second on that.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Roerba?
I feel like we're in speed dating, but yes.
Chalam Charla?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Aquino?
Yes, okay. Final item, please.
Final item tonight is new business, item number ten. This is resolution number one-one-two-three-four. This is a resolution conditionally approving an affordable housing loan in the amount of two-point-seven million from the city's housing fund to Pacific West Communities, Inc., authorizing the city manager to execute a loan agreement and related document for the construction of fifty-two affordable housing units at the proposed Harrington Grove multifamily affordable housing development and appropriation of funds.
Good evening, Stephanie.
Good evening. Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. So final item for this evening is a request for an affordable housing loan for Harrington Grove, uh, multifamily project. So, uh, West Development Ventures, which is an affiliate of Pacific West Companies, is requesting a two-point-seven million in gap financing from the city to assist with the construction of a proposed fifty-two-unit multifamily affordable project called Harrington Grove. Um, the proposed one-point-nine-four, nine-four acre site is located at seven-five-one, seven-seven-one, and seven-nine-one Harrington Way, which is shown on the screen in front of you. The neighborhood is, uh, surrounded by an urgent care facility, the Overlook Apartments, and an assisted living facility, and is strategically located, um, next to the bike trail and various retail and dining options. The project is in the early stages of pre-development planning and financial structuring, and has not yet submitted an application for design review. However, they have provided us with this conceptual site plan, which shows, um, two residential buildings. As indicated in the staff report, to meet the August twenty-twenty-four tax credit funding round and to leverage some current state tax benefits, the developer is requesting two-point-seven million from the city for the proposed project. Uh, the slide on the screen ahead of you provides a snapshot of the timeline for funding request and also gives an overview of the city's housing funds. Um, there is currently eighteen-point-nine million approximately available to fund affordable housing projects. Uh, the city's affordable housing loan consultant, TDA consultant, uh, conducted a preliminary review of the early-stage due diligence documents, which included a pro forma, site plan, purchase agreement, and project summary, and concluded that the project is generally structured within acceptable, um, industry standards, and that the two-point-seven million dollar amount, which represents fifty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-one dollars per affordable unit, is reasonable. Um, due to the timing of the TCAC application deadline, which is August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, and City Council's August recess, TDA's review was somewhat compressed, and therefore, they were recommending that the city's commitment be limited to this August twenty-seven, twenty-four funding round, uh, with any future funding commitments contingent on the developer providing more finalized due diligence documentation. As such, that condition was added to the term sheet, which is included in your packet. Um, with regards to the other terms for the loan, they are pretty consistent with what has been approved in the past. And most of those are summarized on this slide before you. It's also important to note that the funding comes from the city's housing fund, Fund Two-Thirty-eight primarily, and that this will not impact the city's general fund. Um, over the past eighteen years or so, the city has provided numerous affordable housing loans. Those, um, those projects and amounts are summarized on this slide ahead of you. Uh, this project would add fifty-one more affordable units if, if funding is approved by the city and future development is approved by planning commission. Um, before concluding the report, um, or my presentation in preparing this presentation this evening, it was discovered that the staff report referenced an incorrect CEQA reference. The correct exemption should have been cited in the staff report were CEQA Guideline Sections one-five-zero-six-one-B-three, assistance to, uh, which is for the common sense exemption, and CEQA Guideline Section one-five-two-six-seven, Financial Assistance to Low-Moderate Income Housing. It is worth noting that when the project goes before planning commission, it will undergo CEQA review, and, um, that will be during the design review process. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the City Council conditionally approve an affordable housing loan for Harrington Grove in the amount of two-point-seven million and adopt resolution number one-one-two-three-four.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Stephanie? Councilmember Chalam Charla, any questions?
No, I just want to, you know, thank for all her, you know, um, hundred percent due diligence on this. Uh, I want to thank Pacific West Communities also for picking the Folsom because we are adding another fifty-one homes for workforce. Our workforce, you know, in, in our town, their affordability is not that much. Uh, Vice Mayor, I think maybe this is more of a policy question. We can talk later on, I just want to put it out there. Uh, right now, the builders or the investors, who knows about these projects, are, they are reaching out to cities, and, uh, they know we have funds, and we are giving them this much. Uh, but are there any way we, as a city, can be more transparent? How much we have, we are welcoming investors to provide more workforce housing? So right now, we don't, unless I'm speaking wrong, uh, we don't have a set thing out there, policies, which as a city can go out and, uh, share the information to everybody. And only those people who wants to work or has, you know, find the lots, they can come and build. So, uh, anything you can correct my statements, please.
Yeah, so we don't currently have, like, an affordable housing loan policy or program, but we actually are working on that right now with our, our consultant, TDA consulting. And the hope and desire is to have a set standard going forward that will be helpful for finance, so that we're not always negotiating terms, that we have consistent terms throughout, and that, um, we can, uh, when we have funding such as we do now, that we can have an RFP, Request for Proposal, sent out, and maybe have some competition between different developers or, you know, let developers know that, that the city has funding that might not approach the city otherwise.
Can I just make a comment? Uh, and also, just one thing I've learned over the last four years. There are, um, developers that specialize in the affordable housing building, correct? So they would know of the funds that may be available to them. Is that correct?
Well, if we're not posting it, they might not know how much the city has available. So if we have the program, and then if we, you know, once we have enough money that we think we could fund an affordable housing project, we could do an RFP process. We've been really lucky because we have a lot of developers that have experience in the city that, you know, know that they want to build here, and they will reach out to us and say, hey, you know, do you guys think you have enough money to fund a project? We've been kind of letting them know that we're trying to do this process, so they are aware of that.
Thank you.
Good suggestion, that sounds like it's on the radar. Uh, any members of the public who wanted to speak on this item? No, okay. Uh, then if there are no further questions or comments, we will entertain a motion.
And the, the developer is here if you have questions, just in case.
Would you like to speak, or would, it sounds like we're, okay. Okay.
Hi, Madam Chair, Mike Kelly with the Pacific Companies. Thank you for allowing me to visit with you today. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I guess we're the last item up here, so get, get you out of here. Um, we are, uh, we're not new, uh, to the city, though. We do have a project on Oak and Blue Ravine. It's, uh, the Peterson Place, seventy-two units. Uh, we worked on that a number of years ago. In fact, Arnie Jelvin was instrumental in, in, in shepherding that through. Um, we also have five projects in Elk Grove right now. We have a two-hundred-and-ninety-six unit project under construction, a very similar financing structure on Laguna and, uh, Bruceville. And then we also have a hundred-and-ninety-six unit project, uh, in the city of Lincoln. And all of these projects are public-private partnerships with, with the city. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for choosing Folsom.
Yeah, thank you again, Mark, yep.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move resolution number one-one-two-three-four.
I'll second on that.
We have a motion in a second, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Roerba?
Yes.
Chalam Charla?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Aquino?
Yes. Okay, uh, any council requests for future agenda items?
I have one. Um, several representatives from the city of Folsom recently went on the study mission to Columbus, Ohio. And when we went on this last year, we had Choose Folsom come and present some highlights from the trip from the trip that could be applicable to our city. So I would like to see a presentation from Choose Folsom on the study mission to Columbus, Ohio.
Okay.
I will invite them.
Councilmember Roarbaugh, anything?
Yeah, I have a couple. One, I, there was a lot of discussion during the budget about the Kids Play Park, also known as Castle Park. So I want to make sure that our public is very engaged in this process or in what's happening with this project on both sides, pro and against. I want to make sure that we are understanding if the council is supporting a competitive bid process. And also that we're encouraging that we do what we need to do now as that process goes forward. And then how we can support the nonprofit that's been developed. So I'm wondering if a presentation of action steps and timelines would be the best way to do this. And then that, then we could discuss fully about what the council sees, since this was really, came from the city manager and the draft budget, but really fully supported by the entire council. So I see this as something that we need to do regular updates on, also give input on. So I would like to see that as a process. Number two, my colleague Rodriguez mentioned the Economic Development Consultant. I was in the, I think it was May, meeting. They were pretty close to delivering. I would like to see this brought in the last meeting in August, August 27th. I believe they're giving an update to the staff at the end of July. I would also like to be just a witness of that meeting as well, just like the last time. This was an independent consultant. So, you know, I would really like to have them be able to present what they have and then the council as a whole can give them feedback and then discuss it as a full. So I'd like to see that as soon as possible versus waiting till the fall. I think there was a little ambiguity when Elaine, you mentioned, well, it might be late summer into fall. I would like to see that August 27th for sure, knowing that they're pretty much ready, besides the feedback they'll get in July. That's it for agenda.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Challem Charla, anything? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Then we'll move on to city manager reports.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Sacramento Regional Transit is continuing construction efforts to add a passing track to provide 15-minute service frequency to Folsom area stations. The anticipated completion date, as well as the temporary bus bridge and road closures, has been extended a few weeks due to the required movement of underground conduit. Lane closures are in effect on Folsom Boulevard as part of this project. So related to this, the city of Folsom, Choose Folsom, and SACRT will share shop local messages with a spotlight on Folsom Boulevard. So look out for social media posts, e-blast banners, and transit ads. At the request of the Folsom City Council, we are implementing a new program to spotlight community members who have gone above and beyond to serve and improve the Folsom community. The city is now accepting applications for the New Spirit of Folsom Award and Annual Recognition Program. Each Folsom City Council member will nominate one recipient from their respective city council district, complete the online nomination form by Friday, August 9, to share the story of a deserving individual. And please check out our website for more information. And finally, join Folsom's first responders on Wednesday, July 31 for the Battle of the Badges Blood Drive hosted by Vitalent. The Folsom Fire Department and Folsom Police Department will compete to gather the most blood donations. Community members are invited to donate blood and vote for their favorite law enforcement therapy dog. Choose between Team Liberty, Folsom Police Department, or Team Blitz, Folsom Fire Department. The blood drive will be held at the Folsom Police Department at 46 Natomas Street from 10 to 2 p.m. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Challem Charla.
Tomorrow evening from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m., Big Wave Coffee Shop. We have, under the banner, Coffee with Cop, that's the banner. But we have, you know, Mark Rakovan from Public Works and also Kelly from the Parks and Rec. They're all generously agreed to join us. Residents, if you are watching, please join us and bring any concerns you have, whether you have a stop sign issues or cops issues or any parks or trail issues. We will have a city staff, you know, expert city staff to answer your questions. This is again tomorrow from 4:30 to 6 o'clock at the Big Wave Coffee. Vice Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Roarbaugh.
I have several things. First, we just got an email today, but also I've been hearing a lot about the school board discussion about the transportation and reducing of the bus transportation. So I want to encourage the staff, Marlene, if maybe, maybe as we prepare for the consequence of that, if there is a conversation you could have with SACRT to evaluate options that we might, may or may not need once school starts. I mean, I think people are going to start realizing how it's affecting them by the beginning of August when school, and then as school starts. Maybe it's an additional stop or two, but maybe start having that conversations now so we can prepare if there is any consequences to it. Also, maybe communicating with the public that it's the school board that will decide this and here's what's happening, just as a communication outreach to prepare them. Because as we know, that the public will come to us. And this wasn't our decision, but just kind of, and maybe keep us posted on those conversations. And then a couple, I mean, I think it was YK that was saying a couple of staff things. I do want to thank Mark and Marie for having a meeting. I don't usually ask staff to come to meetings very often with a resident, but they came with, our staff came with some great solution, or a great solution, and everyone came away just really happy. And it was a really brief, very professional conversation. And I just really respect and thank you for taking the time to make the, make me look good to our constituents and business owners. So thank you for that. Chris O'Keefe put a plaque on one of the benches in my neighborhood that they've been working on for about over a year for someone who passed two years ago. And it just meant a lot that him and his crew came out and took the time to take such good care and gave good feedback. So I just want to thank him specifically. And this goes in line with my other item. I just want to thank Kelly Gonzalez for taking the time to go down the Choose Folsom trip, which I got the privilege of attending in Columbus, Ohio as well, last minute because our mayor couldn't go. And it was completely worthwhile. We had a lot of great conversations, but seeing her light up on different meetings we had, and I would light up on different meetings. And it was really great to have a staff member there to kind of help facilitate this. So I would encourage that we include, maybe the, Rosari and I were the ones that attended, and our staff member who also went as well in that presentation. And that leads me to what else happened at the Choose Folsom Columbus trip? Eldorado Chamber, Choose Folsom. There was a lot of dignitaries there. One of the unseen benefits of it, it's a connection you made. They made a lot, talked a lot about public-private partnerships. We throw that word around, those words around a lot. But really how, what, one things we learned, some of the things we learned was really how to facilitate and make that happen, whether it's a special improvement district or safe and clean programs, putting those together first. But really, some of the overarching things were that Columbus is really trying to revitalize their downtown. Of course, it's like a million people, so it's like 10%, or 100%. Like, would that be 10, 10 times? Thank you. Bigger than Folsom, but there's always things to glean from that. And definitely, they are putting people first. We're distinctive by nature. And I think that we should incorporate people first as well because that summarizes everything I think that's good in the city. And I think moving forward with these public-part, private partnerships, we have to come from a place of how and not we can't and figure out a way that we can. And one of the mottos that I liked, that I heard is, if you like what we're doing today, wait until tomorrow. And that was, I wrote that down and I want to remember that as, you know, I continue on this council. So I think that covers everything. So thank you.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Well, I am glad to hear that we are going to move forward and do a support on Prop 36, which is the Homeless Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act, because that's a very important part of, I think, making our California a lot safer. And then second, I just want to comment on the gentleman who came and spoke about the customer service he received when he had Mark and his team deal with some of the problems that were immediate, and it was a Saturday morning. But it really made me think of, you know, in the past almost four years being on this council, customer service is something that is a part of the fabric of the city and its employees. And I think in any department you go to, you really do experience that people want to help solve the problem. And it, to me, it's no, it's not a surprise that on a Saturday morning, someone sends a 7:00 a.m. email. Ryan gets it, responds by 7:30, and Mark and them are on it. Like, I think I've gotten accustomed to thinking, well, that's just the norm. But it really isn't. And I think just overall in, maybe in government. But our city does an incredibly great job of customer service. And Elaine, I think that is just a testament to your leadership. And even earlier, when I saw you, somebody was coming up with a blue card and you went and you said, may I, may I take this? And I just thought that, like, that was customer service. And so I just wanted to comment on that. It's great, you're right, it's great to hear it from residents, but it, I see it all the time that it's become a norm. And so that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Many thanks to our great employees.
Thank you. Last week, the mayor and I were able to attend a ceremony at the Tykert Plant in Rancho Cordova off Grantline Road to announce that the Capital Southeast Connector has received $25 million from Department of Transportation. So many thanks to Congressman Barra and Kylie for helping to secure that. They talked about using that to kind of, you know, widen and fix and all that stuff, that stretch of Grantline Road. That is apparently the deadliest stretch in Sacramento County. So really great news. Just a reminder that the council will be on recess. So no meeting here on August 13th. We'll see you back here on August 27th. I was really hoping for 7:00 p.m., but it's 7:31 and we're going to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.